2021. Get my agenda up here. Present is myself, Shane Blazer, the mayor. We have Eric Daven, Ben Gudrow, Austin, Ryan Austin. Present in chambers and online, we have Shane Burkhart and Susan Feath. Lee Tao is excused. With that, our first item of business is to approve the report from the May 3 Plan Commission Meeting. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Susan Feath.
I second.
Second by Eric Daven. Anybody have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? That motion carried. First item of business is Plan Dash 21 Dash 0492 Matt Graff. A request for a certified survey map approval to create two lots at 2620 Gainer Avenue, parcel ID 3404367. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you is pretty self-explanatory. It's the creation of a lot, a separate lot out of a larger lot. The lot does have an existing house on it and would meet the minimum lot requirements within the zoning district. Therefore, staff would recommend approval.
Plan Commission, have any questions or comments? Mr. Graff is in the audience, but I'm sure he won't. Probably has nothing to say unless somebody has a question of him.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
From Burkhart.
By Shane.
I'll second.
Second by Ben. Any further discussion? Seeing none, everybody in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Onwards to the next item is Plan Dash 21 Dash 0522, City of Wisconsin Rapids. Request for a certified survey map approval for one lot and to dedicate it as a right-of-way at the end of Grove Avenue, east of 16th Street South, parcel ID 3414800. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you. This is a small parcel, again, at the end of Grove Avenue, east of 16th, near the quad complex for the high school. And the engineering department is looking for acceptance of, or dedication for the right-of-way. Therefore, if it is used as right-of-way, it does not need to meet the minimum lot size requirements for the zoning district. But we would recommend approval as the future land use map does identify the extension of Grove Avenue at this area.
Thank you, Plan Commission. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ryan.
I can second.
Seconded by Eric. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We are on to item number four. Plan Dash 21 Dash 0507, Wisconsin State Firefighters Memorial. Request for a site plan approval to construct a shed at, within Ben Hanson Park, at 2031 Second Avenue South, parcel ID 3404746. Kyle?
Thank you. This is a request that typically doesn't come before the Plan Commission, however, because the accessory structure requested does fall within a park, it does require that site plan review because, again, it is a public park. It is an approximate 12 by 10-foot shed. They've identified two locations for the structure. I think both locations would meet the required zoning setbacks and both would provide some screening for the structure. It's going to blend in with the existing structures within the park with brown siding and red trim or maroon-colored trim. And I think, as the applicant can probably attest to, it's certainly needed on the property in order to store lawn equipment within the shed rather than in the existing facilities on-site. Therefore, we would recommend approval with the three conditions on page one of the staff report, which include zoning requirements are met, including setbacks, applicable permits be obtained through the city, and that community development department staff have the authority to approve minor modifications to the plan. And again, knowing that either location is requested, so I don't think they've yet determined which of the two locations they prefer, but again, I think both are appropriate in this instance. Thank you.
Plan Commission, do you have any questions? I'll make a motion that we approve the request to construct a shed at the Ben Hanson Park with the staff recommendations.
I'll second.
We have a second by Ben. Seeing no further questions, all in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Next item is number five. Plan Dash 21 Dash 0436, Brings Cyclery and Fitness. Request for a sign exception to reduce the setback for an existing non-conforming sign and install an electronic message center at 1630 and 1710 A Street South, parcel IDs 3411717 and 3411718. Kyle?
As we have not yet adopted the new sign code, the applicant has requested to pursue an exception. As our current sign code does offer an exception, they can pursue a 25% increase to the applicable bulk regulation. In this case, it's the five-foot setback that they're asking for an exception from. They can reduce that 1.25 feet, which they are. If you look in the memo on page 29 of 86, you'll see that the current sign has a sign base, a flower planter around the bottom of the sign. And that flower planter currently encroaches into the existing five-foot setback, meaning that the entire sign is non-conforming. And you cannot expand a non-conforming sign. If you do pursue a face change of an existing non-conforming sign, you need approval by this body, as we've done, I think, in the last couple of months here for one or two occasions. In this case, the applicant is requesting to remove the sign base as well as remove the existing changeable copy part of the sign, which would mean that the sign is brought into compliance, meaning they can then make changes to the sign. And the change that they want to make is to install an electronic message center on the existing sign pole underneath the Brings Cycling and Fitness cabinet. However, again, because of the setback and the size of the EMC, they would have to shift it so it would be offset of center on the pole. So they are requesting to encroach into the setback or they're requesting that exception, in this case, to be able to place the EMC sign on the center of the pole rather than the proposed, or rather than what would be the offset if they met the sign setback. So in that case, I think, you know, I generally would support this. I think, you know, in all sign exceptions, I think we need to tread lightly in terms of not needing to set precedent. I think in this case, because they are removing the sign planter, meaning that they're increasing the compliance of the sign going from non-conforming to conforming, I think I generally support that. And I think because they're pursuing the exception process, I would also generally support that. So while they would be encroaching into the setback, it's not as great as the sign planter encroaches into the setback. The last thing I want to note is that it is just outside of the vision triangle for signs, so the vision triangle should not be an issue in this case.
Thank you. Plan Commission, have any questions? Not? What are your wishes?
I can make a motion to approve, or approve the exception. How you want to word it?
We have a motion by Eric, seconded by Susan. Is there any further discussion?
This is Shane here. The only comment I have, I'm in support of it, just for the recommendations, making the wording consistent with what we had with previous electronic message boards, with the amount of times it can switch in a minute or something like that. I don't know, Kyle, do you have access to our old recommendations with regards to electronic message centers? I think Coldwell Banker, SeaWorld Coldwell Banker was our first one. That was, I don't know, four, three, four years ago. And we went along and established standards that were consistent with how often the message can change and no flashing and stuff like that.
You looking, Kyle?
So, Mr. Chairman, do you want us to back up and construct the motion to include that recommendation?
I think Kyle is researching it really quick.
I think the last one that I read, and it appeared that we were going to be addressing it later in the agenda here, but in the sign code for the electronic messaging, I think there was like a five or a 10-second stagnation and change. I don't know if that would necessarily impact the electronic messaging as long as they were in conformance with the new sign code that we're going to be looking at.
So again, the difference we need to recognize here is that this sign variance, or this sign exception, is being requested prior to the adoption of the new sign code. So in reference to the new sign code, technically, it would not apply in this case because the new sign code that's proposed hasn't been adopted yet. So in the event that the sign exception is permitted, the sign size, the other sign requirements would fall under our current code, our adopted code, Chapter 46, which doesn't necessarily have specific requirements for electronic message centers. We define changeable copy signs. We generally reference their electronic nature within the code, but we do not have specific requirements in our existing code regarding the changeable copy, regarding the flashing and type and things of that nature currently in the code. Henceforth, the reason why we've made that recommendation in the new sign code.
Would it be advantageous, then, to delay the adoption of this variance in light of us speaking on the sign code tonight?
So that was discussed with the applicant. The applicant wanted to pursue the sign exception because there is no sign exception or sign variance currently recommended within the sign code. So there would be no relief from the five-foot setback. And because the adoption of the code, as it's been provided in the packet, isn't guaranteed either, they wanted to try to take advantage of the existing sign exception within the code. As you know, and as you've probably read, I've included a few other examples of a sign variance process. But again, because it's not approved at this point, it's not guaranteed, the applicant wanted to move forward this month. They actually wanted to move forward last month, but they did not meet the deadline before we had the packet out. And I think the applicant may be on the phone or in the audience, yes. So we have members from Stratford Sign here that can certainly provide some input as well.
I guess also, JR, you don't have any restrictions, do you, currently on your sign? Okay. Sounds good. Shane, just for your information, JR was in our audience. Maybe if you want to come up to the microphone and turn it on? And then everybody can hear you. The green light on the bottom.
Okay, I have it on. So Dan Drexler, 110 Connor Avenue, Stratford, Wisconsin, Stratford Sign Company. So, you know, I think that some of the restrictions with the message centers and things on the timing is something that is somewhat standard for a lot of different cities. And there seems to be, as we go, you know, from place to place, there always is certain timing and things with the message centers and graphics and things like that. And, you know, most businesses tend to work through that. And typically, once everything is permitted, it doesn't seem to be a problem with it. So, you know, I guess whatever you guys feel would be, you know, or if there isn't any right now, before the new sign ordinances implemented, I guess that that is fine. Otherwise, you know, there is some thing, I mean, I think that our customer, your taxpayer, I think, can work through some of those timing issues and some of the switching of the graphics and things. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
I'm Carissa Lager with Media Works Wisconsin, and I'm the one that has helped facilitate this through Stratford Signs and Brings. And when we had worked with Madeline in the office, we had actually been given a list of, you know, I think it was, you can't have video, you can only have it scroll a certain amount. We had been given a list of, like, timing issues that the client had said, okay, you know. So I guess I was surprised that there wasn't any, but she had already, you know, expressed the satisfaction in the fact that if we did it, they just want to be able to not have someone climb up the ladder and have to change out lettering and stuff. So I think they would be very compliant with whatever you guys decided. Thank you.
So as the code--
My thought was just to make it consistent with what we had done for all of the other electronic signs. I think, I can think of maybe three, four of them over the years, and we always had a consistent verbiage of what some of the restrictions were.
Do you recall if that was through the sign exception process?
I don't recall.
This is Susan. Shane, my recollection is that you're correct in your thinking that we recently approved one, and I don't know if it was the one for Coldwell Banker or not, but the scrolling, the blinking and so forth were concerns with the sign that we approved. I can recall that. And I thought there was something to the effect that it was 15 seconds.
Yeah, I know Joe Terry brought up most of the concerns from the transportation standpoint of, you know, from a safety point of view.
I would only add that that's a really complicated corner that that sign sits on, and there's already so much distraction and have been so many accidents there that I would hope that whatever we do does not contribute to the distraction.
Your thoughts, Kyle?
You know, I think if, because it's an exception to the ordinance, I think if you do approve it, obviously, you can add the conditions. You could add the conditions indicated within the recommended sign code. Even though the recommended sign code technically is not adopted because this is a separate actionable item, under the existing code, you could add those same conditions for electronic message centers, which you will find on-- Page 67.
I guess that brings me back to my original question. Shall we modify the motion, or how would you like to proceed?
I agree with Shane, though, that if we're going to have something which should be consistent with the prior signs, or if we've instituted some restrictions.
So the exception in front of us is just for the setback, or is it the exception to also install the message center? Like, if they weren't doing the message center, we would just be talking about the setback? And if it wasn't, if there wasn't a setback issue, they could install an electronic EMC right now with no problems?
If the sign base is removed, correct. Because then the sign comes into compliance with the code because it meets the setback. So ultimately, they submit a requested change, either to the copy of the sign, and that doesn't go to Plan Commission. It goes through our office to ensure compliance with the sign code prior to us issuing a permit. But, you know, we don't necessarily have the ability, at least under the current code, to require those, at least not that I'm aware of and haven't found in our existing sign code. So unless, you know, the code I'm referencing isn't up to date, or there's a separate set of standards under, you know, another section of the ordinance that I'm not aware of, I don't think we have the ability to require the, you know, the regulation of the display and the timing and things of that nature. However, we have a unique circumstance now where because we're granting relief or an exception to the code, we can add a set of standards and conditions onto that special exception.
That makes sense. I just think of different ones, like, in the city that have put up the display center that don't have any restrictions because they were in compliance to start with.
So I guess going back to Susan's question is, you know, where do you want to go from here?
So the general standards within the new code are on page 67 of 86 regarding electronic message centers. You could recommend that those be included with, as conditions of the approval for the exception. It looks like there are eight of them. Then if the code is adopted in its entirety, the sign would be consistent with those standards?
I'll make a motion to amend Susan's--
Well, who made the original motion?
Eric.
Or was it--
Yep.
So I guess if you two want to withdraw your motion, we can start over.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my original motion.
Let's draw the second.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt the recommendation of Kyle with the general standards amendment in there to include the electronic messaging display outline on page 46, or I'm sorry, 67.
Second.
So we have motion, a second. Everybody clear on the motion? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Does anybody oppose? Thank you. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, could we go back for a point of information? I, my call, my Zoom connection dropped, and I missed the item on the firefighters memorial. By the time I came back here and I asked them that you had approved it, is that correct?
That is correct.
I had one comment, or question, actually, and probably the only, or the oldest person we have here. When the firefighters memorial was first constructed, there was long and hard discussion about constructing any buildings within the site, and that was because, I believe, there is an easement, a perpetual easement restriction on either Lyons and Ben Hanson or just Ben Hanson. And I think that the building within that park had to have special approval to be built. And I don't know whether or not that has been researched. If Sushil perhaps took a look at that perpetual restriction prior to bringing this item forward.
Kyle, are you aware of any of that?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm turning on all of our layers on our GIS website to see if we have, if we're showing anything over the park. I'm not seeing anything under plats or engineering drawings, though that doesn't mean nothing exists. You know, any improvement within a public park requires Plan Commission approval under statute. And anytime you have an easement, whether it's on public property or right-of-way, also requires Plan Commission approval and council action. So, you know, I can't answer that now because I'm not seeing anything on the website, but I can certainly look into it and see if any easements exist and where they're located.
There are, I know.
I would--
Go ahead, Susan.
We go back and, I would just suggest that we go back and look. Not that it's going to affect the decision one way or another, but it's a question that comes up from time to time, particularly on Riverbank property, and this would have been a, an attachment to the conveyed gift that probably happened sometime in the 1920s or so, or maybe earlier than that. I don't even know. I just know that it was a very old restriction, and I know that it covered either both or one of the two parts there.
So it does look like there's a, I believe it's a sanitary sewer on the north, the northern parcel. So the parcel that runs, well, they both run along the river, the open area. You could probably share my screen here.
Well, this would be a legal sentence within the conveyance of the gift to the city, which is very old.
Well, if there's a sanitary sewer, it goes under the river there, I believe, and can you guys see--
Well, no, we're not talking about a sanitary sewer, Kyle. We're talking about any structures within the park itself. And I know that the building, the firefighters memorial, I believe, was an exception. And we've got an exception on the other end, down near the Riverview Expressway, which is a public restroom, I believe. So I know we've made exceptions, but I believe that there is a perpetual easement on at least part of that park property, and it would require some special action, legal action, in order to go according to the rules of how those easements are set up. And I just, I'm sure that Sushil probably has a file on it.
Is it like a deed restriction regarding use?
Yes, correct. So it would be in the recorded document in register of deeds.
Well, we will look into it. I think regardless, the action item tonight is for a public facility, or a facility within a public property on public lands, as well as the site plan review, which is required under the park district, the P1 district. But if the, if there are deed restrictions and we find anything that would warrant additional approvals, we would just have to bring it back then. But thank you for noting that. So you did not, you did not vote on that item, then, as the call dropped?
No, I didn't. The call dropped. I don't know what happened.
Okay.
I was out being fair time.
Did you want to vote on that item? I believe with action from the Plan Commission, it could be revisited.
That's okay. If it passed, I'm fine with that. I just, I'm concerned that we follow the rules with regard to deed restrictions, and if that hasn't been researched, we probably should.
We will do that. Thank you.
I don't know if we noted it or if it makes a difference, but that shed kind of looks like it's temporary. It's not really like a-- like it's a temporary, it's not really like a permanent structure. Would it, might be a difference to, if something's getting built, like one of those sheds, you can just move around, so it may not be permanent.
Yeah, I'm not sure in terms of, you know, whether it's going to go on a slab or gravel, but I mean, for the most part, sheds have to be tied down under building code. So whether that's, you know, frost footing or rebar or somehow they need to be anchored, but, you know, if you set it on blocks, they're certainly, they certainly can be removed relatively easily.
Okay, nothing further. We'll move on to item six, Plan dash 21 dash 0508, Conexus Credit Union, request for a site plan review and architectural review to construct a new facade and perform other site improvements at 1930 A Street South, parcel ID 3411731. Kyle?
You will remember that Conexus came before the Plan Commission earlier this year for the west side of the building. Things went very well on the west side and are continuing to go well and they've, they've pursued additional improvements along the east facade as well, which include the installation of glass, EFA, stone, wood siding and an awning. They're also pursuing some minor changes to the parking, the handicap parking out front and removing some of the concrete to create additional landscaping area. So because of these changes, an architectural review as well as a site plan review are required by the Plan Commission. In performing that review and looking at the standards, you know, for the most part, staff feels as though the requirements are met. I think the, the building's aesthetics and the materials that are being utilized occupy 50% or more of the, of the facades from an architectural standpoint. I think it will match the rest of the building. I think the, if you, if you can remember, the impervious surface ratio was not met previously. However, it was being reduced with the last approval and because of the removal of some asphalt area with the east side improvements, there'll also be removing or reducing that impervious surface ratio even further, bringing it more into compliance. Regarding parking, the, the building's square footage isn't increasing and they're already meeting the, or exceeding the parking requirement, so they do not need to add any additional stalls or any additional landscaping because of the improvements, but they do plan to do some landscaping and so we would, we'd ask that an updated landscaping plan be, be supplied to the Community Development Department just to make sure that the, the plantings and their locations do meet our requirements. With that being said, I think it's a, a great improvement to the property. I think it'll improve the aesthetics of the corridor and I would recommend approval with the following conditions. Again, the impervious surface ratio shall not be increased on the site. Landscaping plan shall be submitted for review. Cut-off fixtures shall be used for the, it should be corrected to east elevation. Light from the business shall not exceed 0.2-foot candles at the neighboring commercial property line. Permit shall be obtained through the city and the Community Development Department staff shall have the authority to approve minor modifications to the plan.
Thank you, Kyle.
I had a question, I see in one of the drawings that the front side, the sign out front, looks like it may be getting changed. Is that part of that or is that just maybe the drawing?
Yes, they are looking to change part of the sign. We've, we've discussed the sign with them at this point and they're not necessarily looking to pursue an exception or anything of that nature. I think they're, they're looking to comply with whatever the, the sign requirements are, whether it's current requirements or what likely would be the future sign code.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve with the staff recommendations noted.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Eric, seconded by Ben, to approve the, the, or the, the request with the staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Anybody oppose? Thank you, that motion carried. Next item on our agenda is item seven, Plan dash 19 dash 0938, Community Development, Public Hearing and Action on a Request to Replace Chapter 46 Sign Code of the City's Municipal Code with a New Sign Code. Kyle, do you want to start with an introduction before we?
I, I do, because the, while I didn't make any significant changes to the, the code itself, I did correct what was a concern raised by a member in the audience regarding the date of, or the year 2013. So you'll find on page 60 of 86 of the packet, that date has been removed and it's been replaced with a placeholder, basically would, would be the inserted date of the ordinance adoption. And that's regarding the applicability, so it would state, "All signs erected or maintained after this date must comply with this chapter," and that would be the, the date of the adoption. The second thing I want to note is that last month I identified that this proposed code, and I spoke to it earlier, does not have a, a sign variance or sign exception process. And I, you know, I think there, there are reasons why I, I didn't put one in there and I think you'll find shortly that, that I, you know, I'm generally supportive, but I also, again, want to tread lightly on this because I don't want to make this a, a regular process where those who maybe can't put as large of a sign up on their property or, you know, want to encroach into the setback can come to, to, to find relief, because that's how it, the sign variance process, process should not be utilized. However, I think if you, if you mirror the sign variance process similar to a zoning variance, and, and the two examples I provided at the end of the sign code from a few different municipalities do resemble that, that zoning variance process where you need to have a unique hardship, there cannot be any detriment to the public and a, a unique property characteristic needs to exist, I think then, yes, I would be supportive of including some sort of sign variance or sign exception process whereby the Plan Commission could be the body that would approve that, or perhaps the Zoning Board of Appeals. But in, in saying that, I did want to provide one example because since we've, we've had a month go by now, the VA clinic in downtown approached us, they approached us a while ago about pursuing off-premise signage. And currently, off-premise signage, which is very similar to a billboard, is prohibited within the city. So if you have a billboard or off-premise signage, it's likely non-conforming, a legal non-conforming sign, meaning it can exist, potentially change copy if they come in here. Otherwise, you, you can't have it. And I think, once I share my screen here, you'll see an example where a sign variance might be appropriate in this instance, not only because of the, the uniqueness that the property has, but also because of the use, being a civic use, you know, serving veterans and those in need of the clinic services. So you'll see on the screen, the, the building that's highlighted here is the VA clinic. It's sandwiched between the YMCA Boys and Girls Club and Centralia and the Lowell Center and some other uses, the, the city's building there. And the only direct access it has or frontage it has on a street is from Fourth Avenue South and Johnson Street. However, the, the property line, to my knowledge, ends at the building, so they couldn't even pursue a freestanding sign. And in, in doing, in, in pursuing a freestanding sign on the back of the property, they could, but again, they're, they're, they don't have exposure, they don't, they don't have direct access on a major thoroughfare. And so those of you who know on Johnson and Fourth, you've got the US Bank there and the majority of those that utilize that street are either patrons to one of the nearby businesses or it's a fairly dead street in terms of traffic. So the, the VA clinic pursued placing some signage out on West Riverview Expressway or on Third Avenue South. However, they do not own frontage or have property there. You'll also notice out front of their property, their parking area for their clinic is actually part of the parcel for the YMCA. So they couldn't even place signage near this parking lot or, or over here because, again, they do not own it. It would be considered off-premise if they placed the sign there. And so I've directly been impacted by patrons looking for this establishment and have had to direct people there many times, once driving from City Hall when somebody followed me over to the clinic. But I think this is a case where it may warrant a sign variance if a sign variance was available to them to pursue either some signage on Third Avenue or on West Riverview Expressway, obviously with the approval of, of the property owner. If the property owner is not approving of any sort of off-premise signage or, or terms to some sort of lease agreement, obviously it's not an option. But I think that, again, this is a case where it, it would make sense for, for off-premise signage here because of the unique circumstances that exist with, you know, the parking lot being on the, on the YMCA's property, the limited frontage on Fourth Avenue and Johnson Street, without the ability to utilize a freestanding sign and, and kind of being sandwiched in between, between two buildings here. The other option that was discussed for them is the city owns a couple of signs. We have a sign out here on Third Avenue South and we have, whoops, we have another one on West Riverview Expressway. But again, even though we have those existing signs, we, we cannot permit the, the tenant to advertise on our existing signs. So again, they're very limited in terms of the advertising they can do for their patrons and they're not necessarily looking to do massive signage, more so some directional signage with some arrows and, and just their name, the VA clinic, to make sure that their, their patrons can easily access the clinic from either of those directions. So again, I think in that case, I think a sign variance, I would recommend a sign variance, but again, we do not have that as an option in our current code. And I have not, I have not drafted language to that effect in the existing code, rather I cited some examples from Kenosha and Appleton. And I think if the, the Plan Commission did recommend to include a sign variance, that we could probably adopt very similar language within our zoning code in terms of the unique property characteristics, kind of the basis of decision or the standards of review, so to speak. And we could either postpone action on the sign code, we could adopt the sign code as it's written, come back next month and amend it with the sign variance, or you could instruct staff to include very similar language within, within the existing zoning code regarding variances that we could then draft in a resolution before the council meeting. With that being said, that's all I have with regards to my comments. I would remind you that there's a public hearing on this item and I believe there are some members of the public who wish to speak. Thank you.
I have a quick question with your additional examples. Omitted also, I saw from our proposal here was any type of coercive action that could be taken to enforce. I think I see in 46, I think it was near the beginning of, of this document, there was basically defining the process of enforcement, but I think you included something from Appleton that had language on, say, monetary fines or anything monetarily enforceable? And I didn't see any thing in our language that had any coercive action that can be taken? Is that correct? Or is that something that you're considering?
Yeah, so the.
To include as an example?
So the examples provided are, are strictly examples regarding the sign variance process. They're not meant to be part of the code. It was just to get you to understand maybe what other communities have done. Either most communities just don't have a sign variance process or an exception process and the code is the code, there's no other recourse for relief. And the other option you typically see is municipalities will have that sign exception very similar to a zoning variance, so they, they'll call it a sign variance. With regards to enforcement, I believe all of our city ordinances have, so the entire municipal code has a section regarding penalty provisions and enforcement.
Okay.
So for the most part, if, if somebody's failing to meet certain sections of Chapter 46, we would reference the penalty provisions chapter of the entire municipal code where it outlines fines, citations, things of that nature.
All right, thanks for clarifying.
All right, so let's get the public hearing going. What I'll do is I'll call a, I'll open the public hearing at 4:46 PM and I'll call three times for anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the sign code. So I'll start there. Anybody wish to speak in favor of the sign code? For a second time.
Good.
Oh, go ahead.
Hi, this is Anita Jardy. I am contracting officer for the US Veterans Administration. We actually do lease the facility from the YMCA. It's a new facility, well, relatively new, it was started in 2019 and we, it actually is only the third of its type in the US in that it is a collaborative effort between the YMCA and the VA. They're hoping to foster more community and also help the vets with exercise and support, build the community. So it's a real asset for Wisconsin Rapids as a city. We like to ensure that our veterans who can find this facility, right now, it's pretty much buried back there and we really need your help. There's been several cases of lost veterans and not only is that a, a problem for us because we're trying to serve veterans in medical need, but there's, you know, it's going to create traffic hazards for the city and possibly lead to accidents. So, um, we can, I do have a sample of the sign, it's very tasteful. It's a little bit unusual. I know that I was hoping there was a exception to the rules for signage in your code for government agencies, but we are leasing this, which is the VA's custom to lease where possible. Do you have any questions? Can I, can I answer anything for those folks here?
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the sign code? I take it everybody wants to speak against it? And thirdly, is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the sign code? Okay, let's, anybody wish to speak against the sign code? Dean, you want to go first? If you want to come up to the microphone?
I want to go.
It's whoever, you, you guys will all get a chance. So we have JRC Wirt coming to the microphone.
Okay, the green light is on, so is that a good thing?
Yes.
All right.
That means go.
I almost got up when he said, "Speak in favor of it" because I do think there's a lot of good things that can come out of it. And one of those is consistency and a, a lack of misunderstanding. As you can see from some of the conversation that took place on the request for brings, you know, there was three or four different council members that remembered that it was different than it actually was. So I do think that there's a need for it. And the only, the only thing I guess I want to draw attention to is that there are some things that I think are overreaching and I think could have an unintended impact on some of the local businesses. I think overall, other than a few items that I have spoken to Kyle about prior to the meeting, I think the proposed sign ordinance has a lot of good aspects to it. And the areas that I guess I'd like to specifically draw attention to have to do with And the areas that I guess I'd like to specifically draw attention to have to do with the electronic message displays. I'm going to preface what I'm saying by that, even though we have an electronic message display that would be grandfathered in, I'm not here just talking about it because I have one of those, because that would be grandfathered in. I think that from a business standpoint, it's got to make sense too and still be good for the public. So the area, I guess, I'd like to draw attention to is in 46.15, which is on, I guess, page, it says 67 of 86 at the top of the page that I'm looking at.
That's correct.
And specifically restricting any type of movement, any type of fading in and out, putting any restrictions on number of seconds. I think those are things that, on their face value, may seem to be fairly harmless. But I brought in an expert in the field and someone that has been in other municipalities and that are even larger than ours and don't have some of those restrictions for good cause. If a message is up there, and if, in the proposed one, it was originally seven, then it was reduced to five, if somebody is going down a street and they're waiting for the rest of the message, it is going to be distracting as opposed to the sooner you get the rest of the message up there, the less distracting it's going to be. So that's just one example of some of those things that are in this proposed sign ordinance that I think should be removed. The other area, I guess, I'd like to talk about is in Section 46.17. And this has to do with awning signs. And I'm specifically looking at Item Number Four. In the proposed, there were some changes made that the sign may be placed on an awning, where before it said it could not, and may not occupy more than 50% of the area of the flap. And I draw to your attention Dunkin' Donuts, their logo of, you know, DD. And, I mean, I didn't go out there and measure it, but the DD pretty much covers the entire awning. And I think that's an unintended consequence. We want to be a business-friendly community, and I don't think whether that DD is on there the size that it is, or 50% of that, that it's going to harm the public in any way. So those are just a couple of examples. And another one that I thought of on the way over here, there's across from the Aquatics Water Park, next to the Dry Cleaner, there's a health and juice bar that is there. And if you look at their windows, their name, their identity, is actually built right into the window. They have a special kind of decal on there that lets light out and in, but it creates the identity for their space. I think that's another example of an unintended consequence for a business. Now, you could say that's going to be grandfathered in, somebody else can't do it. I don't see where those types of applications are really an eyesore in our community. So that's why, as it's being proposed, that I feel I have to speak against the ordinance as it's proposed without making some of those adjustments and variations. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sharon with TLC Sign, and we are based out in Nina, Wisconsin. And thank you, JR, for inviting me to come and speak. I specifically wanted to talk again about the hold time that JR referred to. I didn't print out the copies, but I have them here on my computer. There have been a lot of studies done over time on electronic displays, namely billboards, but your electronic message centers are all within the same category. They're basically the same, but on a smaller scale. And the Federal Highway Agency, along with the DOT, and the digital billboard or outdoor advertising agency, they've all done their own extensive studies that people driving down a road are not distracted by the billboards enough to where it is a safety issue. The results of all the studies that I just mentioned have determined that they are safe for driving and that they do not cause accidents. And one of the particular items in the study says that the longest fixation that they tracked from drivers going down the road was like 1.34 seconds. And a standard billboard with that, it's not electronic, that doesn't change, just your stationary type of billboard, was 1.28. So very close. And it says both of those are well below the accepted standard by the Highway Commission, the DOT. And I'd be happy to share these with anyone who's interested in having them. I can easily email them out or provide printed copies to, as you guys are working through this. And if you want those things as references, I'll certainly be happy to pass those on. And then I don't know if the people who are working remotely, if I'm standing here, they're able to see me. Kind of as JR mentioned, that the sooner you get the rest of the story, is actually safer than putting a hold time on something because there might, any particular business, you know, might say one, you know, quick few words, and then they have a follow-up or a picture to go with that. And sometimes if you don't get the whole message, you know, they're looking or they're wanting to see, you know, what was the rest of that. Whereas if you're putting it out in, you know, a quick half a second per image, it actually is safer for the traffic going by. And this is my little example. I printed some words on paper, so if you can just imagine that.
I have to apologize. The camera on the laptop's not on.
Okay.
Hold on. Kelly can turn it on.
I don't want mine to be in the way. I'll shut this.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay.
So you're on.
Okay. So if you, the piece of paper represents a display going down the road. So if I've got only two slides, so if this is my first message.
Let's hold it up a little higher. There you go. Kelly is, see if we can get that. There we go. Thanks, Kelly.
So if this is the display as you're driving, and this is holding up here for five seconds, and then the next slide comes up, and that holds for five seconds. Whereas in comparison, if your first slide, and then there's the second one right away, by the time, as you're approaching and before you've passed it, you can see the message. And the displays are limited in size most of the time, so sometimes to get the right font size to make it readable, you know, they can't put up more than six words, which is really all this is, you know, three to five words to make it bold enough, easy to read, which is what we always encourage our customers to do. Simple, less is more, just to make it a clear, easy to read from whatever distance your viewer is. So that's my little example for that. I did also look through, maybe, I'll wait a second. Does anybody have any questions on that part for me? I also did see that the, JR mentioned the awnings and, I said some of my other notes down here, but in the new code, are the awnings all going to be non-illuminated? Can a business have an illuminated awning? What I read was that it needed to be opaque.
No, I don't think it specifically requires it to be non-illuminated. Opaque meaning that it can't be see-through, can't be transparent.
So there typically is two types of fabric that awnings are made of. Canvas type, which doesn't let the light through, perhaps on the bottom, if the light is just shining down onto the sidewalk. And then there's a translucent material called Panaflex or Cooley, which the light, just like a sign, it illuminates through the top and the sides. That way, if a business has their logo on it, like Dunkin' Donuts, or, you know, that lights up. And perhaps if a business is even in a location where all they have is a sidewalk in front of them, they can't, and maybe they're not allowed a sign because, you know, they're just right on the road, on a pole or something that they could illuminate. And instead of putting an additional sign maybe above the awning yet to get some sort of illumination in their logo, if they were allowed to have that awning light up, they could put their logo right on the awning, either on the top or there's a sign band, sometimes it's called, across the front of the awning where you could put a business name. So that's my recommendation. I would encourage that they could have the other type of material and not just opaque.
I think the intent here is to prevent like a clear, transparent material where you have the awning framing and then you can just look right at the building facade.
Okay.
I think the intent is to provide an aesthetic component where you can't see through it. Now, whether light can project through it, I think is, would be permitted if some light can still get through, but visually you can't, you know, see the building facade behind the awning. I think that is the intent here, and it's purely aesthetic.
Okay. And from my world, and I'm sure Dan, you know, we refer to opaque, translucent as just whether light can go through it or not.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to clarify that in a different way, say, clear, optically clear, or might be another term that is maybe what you couldn't have. I don't know that a lot of people would want that anyway, that it was, I don't know that that would be too aesthetically pleasing. One other item I saw was with the perforated graph, or with window graphics. 46.21, I think was the area. So the maximum sign area, 50% of the glass area located on the ground floor level per road frontage. My question was, does that include perforated graphics? We do a lot of window graphics where sometimes a business wants to cover all of their front windows with graphics, but they're perforated, and when you're on the inside, you can see out. So they're not solid. It doesn't prevent them from seeing out. It does not allow people to see in, you know, unless you're right up close peering through the hole holes, but.
I think.
And that's usually not, you know, yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think the intent's very similar in that to cover windows up entirely, even if it's perforated, meaning that, you know, the small holes or whatever, where light can, you can still see out, but you can't see in, I think is what it would prevent. So the most you could do that would be like 50% of the window. So again, to preserve the window aesthetic itself and not create a bay of windows that has, is made up of all signage, so to speak.
Okay.
So I think that would be good to clarify that the perforated, if it's called, could be added as what would be incorporated as part of that 50% requirement.
Okay. I wish I had a sample of the perforated graphics here to show you. And sometimes that, you know, various businesses, they do want to cover that. And it's better they use the perforated versus a solid vinyl. I would recommend that if, as a suggestion to your code, that if it is perforated, they'd be allowed to cover 100%, up to 100% of the window. But if it's not perforated, then the 50% restriction seems reasonable to me. If it's not something they can see through, maybe it's cut lettering, so you can see around it, you know, but not through it. One other thing I'm not sure I said on, but I know you guys have looked at other codes back to the electronic message centers. I don't think the city of Appleton doesn't have a hold time. Well, Paca isn't far from here. It's a little bit smaller community, I think, than Wisconsin Rapids. They don't have a hold time. Kimberley, Nina, those are some of the ones I can think of off of the top of my head that they don't put that restriction on the message centers. And I think as long as you have stated in there that it's not flashing, excuse me? Yeah. You know, something that looks like blinking lights, you have that covered. So I don't think changing your screen from one photo or text copy, you know, on the next screen is going to represent anything with the vision on the traffic passing by, and it's not going to represent something like a police car or ambulance or, because you've got that covered in your statement with the flash. Okay. I think that's all I have. Unless anybody has any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll call for a second time if anybody wishes to speak against. Go ahead, Dean.
Dean Ramsden. I'm just speaking on behalf of being a business owner. I own a property at 3021 A Street South that I'm going to come before you for approval. And the only thing I'm asking is that, as a business owner, when you look at that property and have to develop it, it just costs lots of money. And so when you take, for example, a sign issue, the more you restrict things and you keep restricting them and restricting and restricting, it's just harder for a business owner to do business. So I'm not a sign expert, so I'm not, I think they spoke very well. I'm just saying, as a business owner, when you consider this city progressively moving forward and you place certain burdens on us and certain things, it just gets worse and worse. I mean, there's an old house sitting there, so I have the option of just leaving that old house there that can sit there for another 20 years. And, you know, or do you compare it, you know, am I willing to invest into the community? And I have to look at the return on my investment, and am I going to still be alive when I get my money back? And so all I'm asking is that you just, when you look at these restrictions, that you just don't restrict them to death. That, you know, you're in power to do it, and I'm just asking that you do it in the favor of the business. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. And lastly, does anybody wish to speak against the sign ordinance? Okay, let's close the public hearing at 5:10 PM. What, any discussion from the Plan Commission?
Maybe just some notes that I took from some of the comments about the covering of the window. I guess maybe from a safety standpoint of seeing in. If there's something going on, I would want public safety to be able to see inside the, inside. I would want public safety be able to see inside the business before entering or to see what's going on. So I can see both sides, but I think it is important for people to see outside to see what's going on inside that business prior to entering or having a call there.
Mr. Chair, this is Susan.
Go ahead, Susan.
I would propose that we act on the sign code as was presented last time, but I feel a little bit hesitant about including the new procedures for variations. If we could hold that over, I would think that it would be important for us to have a better look at that before we approve some path forward for exceptions.
Okay. I also agree with Eric. I think the hundred percent concerns me from a safety standpoint on the perforated signs. Shane Burkhardt had to leave the meeting, but he sent a message, which I also agree with, is that, you know, I've been accused of trying to look at my rearview mirrors and side mirrors to catch rest of a sign, you know, on electronic boards. So I've done that many a times where you're rubberneck and you're trying to look at the other sign as you're driving by. And so I share some of those concerns on electronic signs. And where Shane also recommends that maybe we speak to our engineering department to talk, to get their feedback on some electronic monitoring, since Joe Terry or Light Engineering Department has expressed concerns in the past. And I think we, I think it would be prudent that we look into that. But also on awning signs, that, you know, I agree with Dunkin' Donuts and, you know, having that full usage and some of their concerns, I agree with that. You know, I don't want to be overly restrictive either, but you want to maintain some semblance of, I guess maybe what I think is nice and what somebody else thinks is nice may be different, which is okay. But I think there's a few areas in here that we still maybe need to clarify and get cleaned up. Those are my thoughts.
Kind of going on your thought, or your comment about the engineering and the timing. Just sitting here, I was kind of researching and I found that the Wisconsin DOT Traffic Engineering Operations and Safety Manual, it's from two thousand and fifteen, but it kind of talks about safety in construction zones and those. And they have that minimum display time of two seconds per line, per phase, per speeds up to fifty-five. And the maximum cycle time should be eight seconds and when speeds are below thirty, a minimum display of one second per line can be used. So I think there's a lot of good information out there, but I think we can, I'm not saying to use that language, but I think other people have had this concern and we can kind of go to the DOT and some of our engineering professionals that can help us with that. I just don't want to sit, get a time and it not be a suggested good time.
Go ahead, Kyle.
I just want to note that regarding the awning, I do believe that was an error, that the flap, as you look above on the first line of forty-six seventeen four, the intent there was to permit the entire awning to have graphics, so to speak, or fifty percent of the entire awning and not just the flap. So I would concur that removing the end of the three last words there on forty-six seventeen four, which are "of the flap," removing those I would support as well. And then I think perhaps adding on number five under awnings, that the canopy, whether existing or proposed, shall be made of a visually opaque material. If anyone else has a different suggestion there to clarify the opaqueness of it so that, right, light can still protrude. And maybe it's just that, just adding a sentence indicating that light can protrude through the material. And then with regards to the comment on the perforated graphics, again, I still, and this is my recommendation and my opinion, that regardless if it's perforated or not, if it looks like it takes up the entire window, I would support the fifty percent as it's written, regardless if it's perforated or not. However, again, if the commission or the council do not support that, that's certainly fine. The other thing is with regards to the electronic message center requirements, from what I've gathered, there are some concerns on perhaps the amount of time necessary. So is that something that you'd ask staff to perhaps research and bring back? Postpone action on the whole code to come back with these changes? I believe, Susan, you mentioned that you did not support, at least at this time, the sign variance process, but perhaps would be open to a sign variance moving forward if the language was in front of the commission?
Correct. I just haven't had time to study that. That was kind of a surprise.
And I think that it was something that you had proposed as an example, but you don't have language now currently, correct?
Right. And I think if we were to adopt it, I think I would probably take very similar language out of the zoning ordinance, which is pages eighty-three through eighty-six, where it talks about the standards, standards for a variance in terms of needing a unique property characteristic and no harm to the public and hardship and so forth. I think essentially you could grab those same standards and create, or apply them to the signs rather than just the zoning code. And I noted in the memo that a lot of municipalities actually have the sign code embedded within the zoning code, so they don't have a separate sign code. It's part of the zoning code. And I think in this case, because you have sign setbacks and you have setbacks for accessory structures, there are a lot of similarities. You've got height requirements within the zoning code and you've got height requirements for signage. And so, you know, the sign code could essentially be part of the zoning code and then it would fall under the same parameters for any sort of zoning variance. Or we can write, leave it on its own as chapter forty-six and just include the sign variance procedures, but obviously specify that they're in relation to signs and not zoning.
I myself would like to see the, an opportunity for a variance and I think this body would be the best body to probably maybe listen to those. But I'd like to see something, I'd feel more comfortable seeing something before voting on it. And I think, you know, holding it over another month, it's just the way it is and we can take it up again next month. We can maybe address the electronic signage. I'm, I agree with you on the fifty percent preparation. I think it's more of a safety, safety thing. Ex cop and me, I guess, kind of thinks about that a little bit. But, and I think addressing these again and kind of re-clarifying it and then coming back next month with some of those questions answered and we can discuss with engineering, you know, their DOT thoughts or their engineering thoughts on that and we can address it again next month. Those are just my opinions.
The purpose of the second time was just so it's not flashing, basically, right? That's all that we're kind of preventing by having a time, so it's not flashing every second?
Right.
That's the intent, right?
Primarily relates to safety.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Susan.
Or Kyle, one of you. With regard to this, the moving, the electronic signs, nobody's mentioned the idea that what I find personally most disturbing is the color. And if it matches the red and the blue of emergency vehicles, it really bothers them to me. And I don't know how you restrict color or prevent people from mimicking the look of the line of lights on the top of a quad car, for instance.
Kyle, is that addressed in there? I agree with you, Susan, and there's a sign in town that I really dislike because of that.
I was trying to find it, but I think there's actually a state statute too about blue lights along a highway, so you know, along A Street, there'd be a highway. So far setback of any flashing blue lights. I just couldn't find it.
Let me think if we can get some of those things clarified and answered.
Yeah, to my knowledge, I think the engineering department has commented on this and did probably over a year ago now, just given the longevity of the code. And if Sue, I think Ron, she could probably comment to that. But I'm not sure if they specifically referenced any of the transportation codes or transportation guides that the DOT offers or the Federal Highway Administration or anyone else. But certainly if you want more information, we can pursue research, we can, I can talk to the engineering department and we can bring back some of those examples to help you better understand whether or not you want to maintain any sort of regulation on the number of seconds. Personally, I recommended to reduce it from seven to five, just because I thought personally seven seconds was too long. But again, that's more of a personal opinion rather than that based on a transportation fact or recommendation. I don't see in here anywhere regarding emergency vehicles unless somebody else has come across it anywhere. But that's certainly something that we could add, that you, you know, the sign cannot mimic, you know, that of an emergency vehicle. Again, though, however, that's in the eye of the beholder. I don't think we can regulate color. Obviously, we can't regulate speech and nor would I recommend that we strongly regulate color at all.
And to Eric's point, it may already be regulated in state statute. I think we could, and maybe engineering department might know some of those answers.
In the interest of progress, are we able to hold out certain sections like forty-six point one five and the idea of the appeal variance process for a future meeting and move forward? Or are we looking to adopt a whole document?
I think the variance or sign exception process can be held out because we don't, we don't technically have one under our current code. We do have the twenty-five percent requirement, but I think if, you know, the, there's an amendment that's set to come forward thirty to sixty days from now, you know, I think that would be okay to hold out the sign variance. With regards to the electronic message center language, I think it would be important to include that initially upon adoption, especially given the sign exception that was granted tonight for the EMC. I would gather that they would probably be coming forward in the next couple of weeks here to get that EMC. Granted, they're operating under the conditions of that approval. We do issue several sign permits a week typically, and I would say probably one EMC or more a month. And I think, again, I wouldn't want to, you know, burden anyone having to wait because we don't address EMCs in the code or put someone at risk because I wouldn't want to withhold permit for our failure to adequately address them in the code either. So aside from the things that have been discussed and the sections that have been referenced, are there any other comments regarding temporary sign language or the other language regarding signs not requiring permits, the residential signs, the election sign language? Any other concerns from a code standpoint regarding those sections? Height, sizes, you know, most of that stuff carried over from the code? There weren't a ton of changes there?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Susan.
Just to muddy it up really great here, it occurred to me as the woman from the VA was speaking, that we also don't address in any of the signage, and I don't even know what the rules are for placing signs that are city signs, that are directional or wayfinding signs, we have them. I don't know what the rules are for getting one. Say, for instance, you're a church or, you know, more aptly, on the highway, you see businesses that advertise their logo on signs. I don't think we have anything of that sort in town. But in terms of getting a sign, a directional sign of that type, does this fit into this code somewhere or is that a totally separate issue in municipal government?
So we do, we do address it under applicability on page sixty out of eighty-six. We reference traffic control sign and other, I'm sorry. All signs erected or maintained after the adoption date must comply with this chapter except for the following, which are exempt. We talk about a traffic control sign, a sign inside of a building that does not meet the definition of window sign, a legal notice posted on a property, so this would like be a red tag, scoreboard associated with an outdoor athletic field, sports league sponsor sign, or civic banners that are temporarily in the public right-of-way, public park, which are subject to other regulations adopted by council. I think a majority of what you referenced is identified there as being exempt from the code.
Would that be like the banners?
Well, I guess.
On streetlights.
That's not what I'm talking about, though. I'm talking about those metal signs that are probably created through city government that are directional, wayfinding signs that the city sponsors and puts on boulevards and public property, guiding people to churches, to other city buildings. How do you, how do you get, the VA, for instance, would be a good example of an organization that probably should be entitled to a sign like that, that would sit out in the boulevard on River View Expressway or, I don't know, on Johnson Street or so forth. Is that addressed in this chapter forty-six or are we looking at something totally different?
So I would interpret those signs to fall under forty-six oh three one. A traffic control sign and other similar signage, when located on public property, along a roadway or other travel way, when placed by or authorized by the federal government, the state government, Wood County, or a municipal government.
Okay, so the VA would have to come to you, Kyle, for instance, and.
Right, so we would.
Seek a permit for a sign.
Yep, so like wayfinding signage that's on traffic poles or, you know, other street signs, street lighting, the banners that we hang often on streetlights, those would all fall under that section and typically are going to require whatever controlling agency controls the public right-of-way there.
Okay.
JR?
Maybe you might want to come up to the mic. Yeah, so people out in Zoom land can hear you.
When you were talking about not resembling emergency vehicles and some of those distractions, forty-six point one four one would be a really good place, I think, to put that. It talks about a sign shall not resemble or imitate, and then it goes on to explain different, you know, types of things that. We've got a lot of businesses that are in strip malls or coffee shops or whatever, and it's kinda hard sometimes when you drive by to see if they're open or not just because of the lighting with the new ordinance, that some of those signs could not be lit and they, they certainly couldn't be a flashing open. So if you are, you know, looking at making some changes to the proposed ordinance, I would ask that that be looked at too.
I guess personally, I, not that I wanna, not in favor of fast-tracking this for sure. So I personally think I'm okay holding it over another month till we get some of these last little items worked out. I'd feel more comfortable working out the items and getting that done ahead of time versus approving something and then amending it later on.
I agree. It seems to me like most of this can be worked out pretty simply. It's just a matter of getting the correct vocabulary into this. So I'm also in favor of holding this out until next month.
Yeah, I agree with, I yield to Kyle's advice here on, on creating one cohesive document to adopt in whole, if that's the intent.
Shall we still move, to hold it over?
Yeah, if we wanna make a motion or if we just wanna, yeah, we can make a motion, hold it over till the next meeting and, and I guess direct Kyle and staff to, you know, kind of finalize it, addressing the concerns that I think the commission has along with the public.
Make a motion to do as so stated.
I'll second.
Motion by Ben and second by Ryan to hold it over until next month to finalize the last, the details. Is there any further discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? That motion carries. So we will see it next month. And we're to item number eight adjournment. What are your wishes? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a second by Ryan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody oppose? Thank you. Motion carries. Everybody have a good evening.